For those minutes.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries, item number three, claims and payroll. Is there any questions?
I'm making a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second, I guess, second. Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports the manor, I went to the manor board meeting, um, and then I also talked to Julie today, I had to sign a form. She said the three things she wanted to pass along was there's no COVID in the manor right now. And they're working on a scholarship for an employee or an employee's child that will graduate from high school. And the third thing that she had signed a contract with the TEP agency for a CNA for ten weeks and today that person got ill and backed out, so now she's without a CNA for the next ten weeks.
Oh boy.
Yeah. And she'd only signed it for ten weeks because she thought that'd get us through to May to like when high school and college graduation was over and she'd get some youth back, or younger people back. Uh, next up is police chief. Mr. Newman, good evening.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot to report for this last month, which a lot of times, that's a good thing.
Absolutely, it is.
Um, as we know, gas prices are going up, things are getting tough, we're starting to see a few more thefts every day, just a few little ones, there's nothing major yet, but we're kinda looking like we might see a lot more of that coming on here in this next month. But that's about all I have, so if you have any questions, I'll answer.
I saw Officer Helly last night, she had her taser and she said, "I haven't had to use it yet."
We're going to training, I think the first week in April.
Yeah.
You gotta go.
Or not. Or not. Okay. Thank you. None of them, I don't see Susan.
She will be here, she must run late, I talked to her.
Okay. No way. Kurt, you got anything to report?
Uh, yeah, so the guys did, uh, fix that muff monster down at the lift station.
Okay.
Uh, we've been robbing sewers and we've had s- a few minor, um, leaks for curb stops and stuff like that, so she says out about, that's what we've been doing.
Perfect.
We've been keeping the snow away.
Absolutely. So the attorney, Mr. Curtis?
I don't have anything that's not otherwise on the agenda.
Okay. Excuse me.
Kyle's on his way, he was coming from Laurel, so he said, uh, he will fit in whenever he gets here.
Perfect. Well, let's skip to number seven, Mr. Johnson. You're up.
Okay. Well. Here to go over the, uh, the casualty insurance program for the, to the city. Uh, we do that once a year.
It just doesn't seem like it's been a year already.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. You got one?
I brought mine.
Okay.
I did not bring mine, but I'll swap with you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, excuse me. Okay. Okay, well, this is similar handout that I did last year, but with the updates.
Okay.
Uh, the, we have blanket, uh, coverage on the building and contents that totals eight million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. And that, they, we increase each year due to, uh, because this is on replacement cost. So it has, the coverage has increased eight hundred and forty-six thousand, five forty-eight over last year. Costs, as you know, have been going up on building new, so that's the reason for that. The general liability, uh, the basic liability is a million dollars. And, uh, this five thousand medical for any one person, that's if a member of the public would get injured and come back. The city could pay their medical without any type of lawsuit or anything. And, and if they sue, then you go into the million, or you're liable. Okay, the crime coverage, that's the same, that's fifty thousand, uh, blanket coverage on, uh, the employees. The city treasures included for faithful performance of duty. This inland marine coverage is that scheduled equipment that gets away from the building, like a scraper, dozer, whatever, that would be moved around. So, and that's all on the schedule, and Jeremy's been looking that over and making sure we've got the right equipment and values. Uh, blanket on hardware and software, uh, thirty-nine thousand, eight ninety-five on the hardware, and twenty-two thousand, five hundred on the software, which I think in the past, uh, felt that was adequate, Courtney and Jeremy. Then on the business auto, they have a million in liability there, five thousand medical, a million for uninsured and underinsured motorists. And the deductible this, uh, year is a little different, it was a two-fifty before, and it's now five hundred for both, uh, comprehensive and collision coverage on the vehicles that have that coverage. And of course, that makes the premium a little bit less too, so. The work comp, uh, that is set by the state, the, the benefits. The, the, the one thing that really controls that is it's based on payroll, plus it's based on your experience. Uh, last year, the experience modification was, I think, one point four-nine, and this year it's dropped down to one point two-five, so in, in other words, last year you had a forty-nine percent debit to the premium. This year it's a twenty-five percent debit because your loss experience is getting better. And they, they have a three-year look back, we got one more on books that's within that time period. And once that drops off, if nothing else happens, that's, that experience mod should go down again next year, so. It's kinda important, uh, to keep in mind because it does certainly save on premium. Some, some losses you just can't prevent, you know, a guy gets, or employee gets hurt, why, if, you know, you gotta take care of it. The commercial output policy, and that's, uh, ten million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six twenty-three. That's the coverage on the generating plant. And then the personal property in there is at fifty-three thousand, five sixty. And the next one is the public officials and employment practices liability. And that's what, uh, protects the city, the council, the board members, the employees, against a lawsuit for, uh, a wrongful type act, other than a bodily injury or a property damage type claim. And we have law enforcement liability, and that's a one million dollar limit for the police officers. And then on top of these basic liability coverages is a, is a four million dollar umbrella, the last item there. And so the city actually has a total limit of five billion in liability. The commercial output policy wa- increased also, uh, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five twenty-three over last year's limit. And the public officials and employment practices, uh, deductible is five thousand this year. Last year it was fifteen hundred. The, uh, that's been the trend with, uh, higher deductibles, both on, you've probably seen it happen on your personal accounts, on homeowners and auto, that sort of thing too. Any questions?
If and when we get rid of the generators, I'm sure that ten million dollars would go down then, obviously.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I talked with, uh, Jeremy a little bit about that, and if you, I mean, you've got different options there, but if you sell this off periodically, we can certainly reduce the coverage as you sell it off, because that is a big part of your premium here, that, that part of it, so. So however you wanna, wanna do that, so.
On, on the computer stuff, is there anything for ransomware or hacking?
Uh, yeah, there is some, uh, cyber liability, that's part of the, uh, general. We added that on here.
Like a couple of years ago, right?
Couple of years ago, that's right.
Cyber liability, so if the city owed customers for losing their data, you mean? Is that the intent?
Well, I don't know if the, the cyber liability is more for hacking in, uh.
Okay, you think that's paying the city if the city has a loss, you mean, from somebody hacking the city?
Well, yeah, if they, if they would hack in and disrupt the computer system.
Well, I mean, the ransomware thing is increasingly common, they ask hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, there'd be something there for that anyway.
Well, yeah, for ransom, that type of thing would be, yes.
How much difference has the premium danced, do you know right off?
Yeah, as opposed to last year?
Yeah.
Uh, it's down about, uh, let me tell you. It's down about twenty-five hundred dollars over last year. And that's a result of your improved experience mod on the work comp and the higher deductibles on the, uh, business auto.
Any other questions for, Mr. Johnson? Thank you for your time, sir.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Susan?
Uh, Kyle's here.
Oh, I know, oh, yeah, hey, is that okay, Kyle goes first? I know what it's like to drive to Grand Island, so, trust me, I know.
I hand these out, okay? Okay, Kyle Overturf here with AMGL out of Grand Island, Nebraska, uh, going over the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year audit report. Uh, just handing out benchmarking numbers, I'm gonna come back to them at the end. Just gonna go a little bit over the audit report, the bound copy that I think everyone I see has there, um, in front of them, so. Just hitting a little bit, in the bound copy on page three, this is the opinion. Um, effectively, this is what the audit's all about. Um, we are giving an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance, we're saying there's, uh, no material misstatements, uh, no, uh, issues with the financial numbers as it stands. Um, based on the appropriate type of accounting, uh, basis that are in place, uh, our governmental activities are on a modified cash basis, and our utilities are on accrual basis. Um, from there then, I'm going to flip to page five. And I think I say this every year, this is the MBNA. If you're only read one part of this, sixty-five pages, sixty-six pages, read this one section. It's a synopsis of what happened during the year, it's the only place in the financial statements where there's comparative information also. Um, so with that then, I'm just going to flip then to page nine. And at the bottom here, this is our sources of revenues for our governmental activities. Uh, governmental activities are general fund, uh, street fund, uh, LB eight forty, so on. Um, and you can kinda see, typically what we see is, uh, two or three revenue sources make up a vast majority of our, uh, revenues in these funds. Property tax you can see is about twenty-three percent, sales tax is seventeen, state allocation twenty-four, so those three are your three largest, uh, for the most part. Um, you can see historically, it kinda varies. Uh, the transfer from other funds that came in this year kinda helps skew that a little bit, um, those are surplus fee transfers from the utility funds to help supplement what, um, is our deficit in the general fund going on there. Um, you know, if you look at these numbers, the sources of revenues on a school district per se, uh, they're probably eighty percent relying on property taxes, so having those additional revenue streams help us out immensely there in that regard. Um, from there then, I'm going to flip to page eleven. Uh, very bottom of this, capital assets, pretty, uh, quiet year in the capital asset world here. Uh, there was a laser printer for the library here, uh, that was donated via the foundation, uh, afforded F-two-fifty and then, uh, hundred thirty-six ERT, uh, meter receiver, so, uh, nothing really too big going on during the current year. Um, page twelve, no new debt then, obviously, with no new capital projects. Uh, our total, the long-term debt decreased by two hundred and fifty-five thousand or fifteen percent. We did have some refinancings, um, on the library bonds, uh, but nothing in the form of new debt there. And then page thirteen, uh, factors kinda varying on the current year we're operating in, or next year, when we're looking at this September thirtieth. Uh, property tax asking increased, uh, thirty-two thousand roughly, um, primarily just due to an increase in valuation. Um, and we'll see here in benchmarking, uh, that's a good thing for us. Um, and then the city also had commitments on paving improvements for seventy-two thousand dollars that were unpaid at year end. Uh, page fourteen then here, we get into the financial statements themselves. Um, this is the first presentation, the business type activities are presented in the back, um, on the exact same basis, they just get consolidated here, so I'm not gonna hit a lot here. Uh, the governmental activities, we add capital assets and long-term debt, and then in addition, we add, um, our note receivables that are hanging out there for, uh, the LB eight forty, uh, the USDA loans and so on, so we've had a lot of activity there in that regards, um, which is good and should help kinda pull everything back in, uh, hopefully get everything, you know, corrected in our deficit. And you can see our governmental funds at the top there, uh, we have minus three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of unrestricted cash. Um, at the very bottom, we do have some actual positive unrestricted net position this year, so that's good there in that regards. Flipping to page fifteen, this is kinda the unique format, and the, the big thing I wanna point out here is the big minus nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar number on the right side of page fifteen. That is the amount of other support that the governmental activities, the street, the general fund, needs from other sources that are essentially assessed to taxpayers, business owners, whatever it may be, in order to support the functions that it has going on. And you can see those sources of revenue flowing down below there, the property tax, the sales tax, uh, state allocation, those three large ones, the transfers. So overall, after all those numbers come into play, our governmental activities reported a gain of two hundred and eighty thousand. Our business type agency reported a gain of two hundred and ninety-one thousand. And then, I didn't hit on it on the first page there, but the component unit is Plainview Manor, that's sitting out there. Um, they reported a net gain of about hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Uh, realistically, from the everything that we've seen this year, that's pretty common for what we've seen. Uh, they had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of grants, um, from the federal government, that is included in that number. Um, they also probably had another seventy thousand dollars of additional Medicaid reimbursement, roughly, just based on their size from what I, we've seen throughout the year. So realistically, without that additional assistance, there probably would have been a loss of about a hundred and thirty thousand. Probably not all that far out of line for, uh, kinda coming out of that COVID cycle there. Um, from there then, I'm gonna flip to page sixteen. These are governmental funds, the general, the street, economic development, debt service. Uh, there is another governmental funds column, this is the Plainview Manor sales tax, the, uh, CDBG, uh, and the community betterment, Keno funds. Additional information on those is back on page sixty-one. Um, I'm not gonna hit a lot on those there. Um, a big number to point out here is our unassigned general fund balance, um, we still have a deficit of about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars of unassigned general fund balance. Overall, we have a positive balance, however, two hundred and thirty of that is sales tax restricted for the pool. Two hundred, almost another two hundred and thirty is sales tax restricted for the library. And then there's another hundred and nine thousand of ARPA that's restricted in there, so, you know, while we have positive cash balances, um, and positive fund balance, um, our ability to spend dollars is greatly limited and restricted there. Um, you know, we didn't go backwards, I think we went backwards, very minimal this year, um, so that's good there, you know. It's just going to be going forward as we look at benchmarking, how to continue to, you know, transfer surplus fees. Hopefully that valuation continues to increase, you know, try to figure out ways to cut down on expenses or look at reallocation types of things. Um, then page eighteen, this is our revenues and expenses for those funds. Uh, just wanna point out here, uh, you know, we'll see in benchmarking here our governmental, our general government, uh, is just, expenses are quite a bit higher. It's just an allocation change, uh, I think we need to probably relook at that, I talked with Jeremy about it a little bit. Uh, just looking at reallocating, uh, individuals that are essentially getting allocated to general government, you know, while it may seem like the city manager's job is general government, which it is, some of his time gets spent on water, some of his time gets spent on sewer. So sometimes getting those expenses allocated out, you know, it's no different than what you think about it as a business, you know, if the three of you owned a business and, you know, Brian pays me directly, but I work for the other two, it's not gonna work, not gonna work out very well for Brian, but it's gonna work out great for you. It's just one of those situations, we just need to look at our allocation of expenses to make sure, A, we're charging enough for our services, um, and at the same time, you know, making sure we're not putting a negative impact on our general fund as we're trying to correct this, uh, deficit, uh, fund balance there. Um, additional information on the general fund expenditures is on page sixty-three. I'm not gonna like hit on that too much, but I just wanted to point that out. If you wanna see some additional breakdown, kinda how the revenues and expenses break out, those are on page sixty-three. Um, you can see overall though, general fund had an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Hundred and ten thousand of that was ARPA, um, and then the remaining portion of that was effectively sales tax that we received in excess of loan payments on both, uh, library and pool, so while we increased general fund net position a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or unassigned, uh, net position, or fund balance did not increase there. Uh, street fund had a small decrease of twenty-one thousand, uh, we have a pretty large balance there, so we're in good shape for street projects. Uh, the other governmental funds had an increase of seventy-one thousand. Uh, the majority of that is due to the sales tax that's sitting out there, uh, we had forty-six thousand new sales tax come in, and only, uh, about twelve thousand go out to Plainview Manor, so, uh, you know, there's thirty-two thousand of it, and the rest of it are just loan collections on, uh, housing notes that are coming in, didn't have any new housing notes going out this year. Um, that information's on page sixty-two, just for your best as reference. Uh, from there then, I'm gonna hit on to page twenty-one. Um, this is our enterprise funds, electric, water, sewer, and sanitation. Um, our operating incomes for all of them, uh, were very strong this year, you guys had some rate increases that went into play, and we'll see here when we look at, um, benchmarking that we're in really good shape as far as we're concerned there. Um, trying to build back up some of those cash reserves for future projects as they come down the pipeline here. Um, you know, while we had, you know, significant, uh, increases here of a hundred and forty thousand, uh, hundred and eight, or a hundred and twenty, sorry, eighty-two and ninety-eight, um, that really just gets our cash flow kinda back to, uh, closer to where it was a few years ago, um, before we started trying to collect our deficit general fund balance. Um, from there then, just a few things to point out in the footnotes. Page forty-five's where the debt is at. Um, we do, like I said, we had the refunding of the library bonds, that's on there. Really outside of that, nothing else too big happened in the form of debt this year. Uh, page forty-seven, the one other big thing to point out is the NDE, uh, sewer note. You guys did get that modification in, so the interest rate and the admin fee dropped to a half percent each, so uh, that's a huge benefit going from, believe that you were at two and one. Um, essentially going from a three percent interest rate down to a one, so that'll help out immensely, um, in that regard. And then the last couple of things to point out, uh, page fifty-four, uh, some commitments. Uh, you guys obviously have the contractual commitment with Bud Sanitation through, uh, twenty-twenty-five, I believe, calendar year in. Um, and then you have the water tower maintenance contract with utility service company. Um, you know, annual payments of about twenty-eight thousand dollars per year with your seventy and thirteen thousand. And then, as I stated earlier, you had seventy-two thousand still committed on, uh, the Miller and Associates paving project there in that regard. Um, outside of that, nothing else really too big to point out there. Uh, any questions on the financials? Okay, there should be a couple of letters, there's one, that's a two-page letter. These are the significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. Um, they're also in the last couple of pages of the financial statements. As normal, we have significant deficiency for segregation duties. Um, it's very common, uh, like I've said in the past, about eighty-five to ninety percent of our cities and villages have this comment, when you have a two or three-person office, it's impossible for someone not to be in control of a transaction from start to finish, so. As council, you guys are that line of defense, you know, scrutinize transactions, ask questions, um, because an audit is not designed to detect fraud, it can help deter by, don't get me wrong, but it is not designed to detect fraud, um, there in that regard. Uh, and then the other letter, that's about four pages long. Uh, flipping to page two, you can see the audit adjustments we made. We made eight audit adjustments to the governmental funds that decreased fund balance by sixty-two thousand. Um, twenty audit adjustments for the business type funds that increased by sixty-seven thousand, so overall about a net, uh, increase of about five thousand dollars. You can see some of the adjustments, the majority, we're just kind of adjusting your books from cash basis on the utilities to, uh, accrual basis there. Um, and then comments and recommendations, we didn't really have too many. Uh, you know, we talked a little bit about watching the allocation, uh, we didn't formally document that one. But then in addition, there are several items just on the inventory listing that didn't have a value associated with them. Um, so we weren't necessarily sure were they worth lists, or were they worth, you know, two dollars, four dollars, so just making sure that we get that inventory listing updated with accurate values there. So with that then, I'm going to jump into the benchmarking, which is the two-page handout that I just gave you. Um, so this is something that we do, this is how you kinda stack up against other communities that are your size across the state of Nebraska. Um, valuation is based on the entire state, based on all the numbers that come from budget documents, so that is based on the entire state, when we get to governmental expenses, this is based on other communities that we have that are, uh, are audits in your size range, um, which in the one to three thousand population range is about twenty different communities across the state of Nebraska. So the big one at the very top is valuation. Um, as I stated, we're in the one to three thousand population range, you can see our updating census, um, came through there, so actually we increased, uh, thirty-six people, uh, from the last census, uh, populations were at twelve eighty-two. Uh, valuation, and this is the one thing, unfortunately, we can't necessarily control, we can kinda try to drive with economic development. Uh, but your peer group is generating about fifty-six thousand dollars of valuation per citizen. You guys as a community are generating about thirty-seven thousand. So that alone right there is about a twenty thousand dollar difference, um, when we look at the peer group, which ultimately leads to lower property tax, which obviously spells out why we have the issues we have in the general fund. Um, you know, twenty thousand dollars of valuation per citizen, um, out of fifty cent tax levy is going to add up to significant dollars there in that regard. Um, but, and then everything, just a reminder, we're comparing on a per-person basis, so, you know, whilst someone might have eighteen hundred people, we're calculating it back to a per-person. Uh, unrestricted net position, um, overall, we're improving here, um, we continue to improve. Uh, it's a slower process, but we're getting there, uh, the business type activities, just as a reminder for some of the new ones, uh, essentially to correct some of our deficits in twenty-eighteen, those funds were essentially, uh, transferred, uh, to the governmental activities to help start correcting our general fund deficit, um, going through there. You can see we actually are reporting a positive unrestricted net position, um, for the first time. Uh, well, I guess we did have one in twenty-nineteen also, in the governmental activities. Uh, number two, top four sources of revenue. Um, grants and contributions, this is always one that's just kind of, uh, can ebb and flow. Uh, obviously, this is something that drastically helps the community, whether it's economic development, whatever types of grants they are, it's dollars that are not coming out of It's dollars that are not coming out of necessarily the citizens' direct tax pocket. Um, it's coming out of state or federal grants, so it's coming out of the tax pocket still, but just not, uh, property tax. Um, we usually see about a hundred and seventy dollars per person, you guys have actually been above that the last couple years there. Uh, property taxes, um, you can see, uh, peer group is two hundred and ninety-nine dollars per person, you guys are at two hundred and seventy-one. But with that, I'm gonna flip to the next page on number eight. In order to get to that twenty-eight dollars short of what the peer group is. You guys are levying fifty cents, the peer group levy is about forty-two cents on a general fund levy. Which is a difference of about fifty-one dollars per person in a general fund property tax asking. And then debt service, we levy sixteen cent levy, the peer group levy is about a twelve cent levy. Which is a difference of ten dollars, so we're having to levy about four cents more on our debt service and we're generating ten dollars less per person. Um, so, once again, things that we can't control in valuation, but. Uh, have a huge impact on our numbers kinda flowing down through here. Um, and then s- state allocation, we're at two hundred and eighty-six compared to two hundred and four. You can see highway allocation down right number three, is a hundred and seventy-two versus a hundred and forty-four. We have no impact on this, this is based on lane miles, uh, the state is starting to pump a little bit more into highway allocation, um. And I wouldn't be surprised if they continued to do that. Uh, municipal equalization, this kind of helps defray that property tax that we are not getting. So effectively, we are getting forty-six dollars more than the peer group due to our lower valuation. Um, which helps to fray, you know, a majority of that property tax that we talked about on the prior page, but. Once again, we're still having to levy eight cents more, uh, per hundred. In order to get to the same property tax number as the peer group there in that regard. Um, once again, can't control it, uh, as I always say, we'd rather have a strong valuation number and be able to. Lower our levy versus depending on the state for municipal equalization there. Um, and then the very last one, and number two is sales tax. Uh, we talked, I know a little bit about this last year, you guys had a pretty significant jump. Um, and you guys had a pretty significant jump again this year, you're still a little bit below the peer group at two oh three versus two fifteen. Um, but you know, in the past two years, we've seen about, uh, twenty-five dollars per person increase in the sales tax, uh, being generated. Whether that's new economic development, whether it's Amazon ruling coming into effect. Probably a combination of everything involved, but once again, that's going to help out immensely there in that regard. And speaking of sales tax, you know, that's something I know that's been discussed, essentially that will be. Probably need to be brought up in the, uh, election this fall, um, because the pool will be paid off, um, at that point. Um, you know, looking at our general fund, uh, deficit that we have, you know. Uh, being able to utilize it for the operations or capital improvements related to, uh, parks and recreation, library and stuff like that. Uh, maybe something that's, uh, a better utilization, um, or capital improvements across the board. Some of those things will help kind of take the burden off of what the property tax dollars are getting used for, let them get used for true operations versus. Uh, you know, potentially capital outlay improvements type deals. Um, obviously, that's going to be a little bit dependent on what your long-term capital budget needs are, but I think at the end of the day. Um, always something to consider there, but, you know, we definitely need that sales tax dollars, you know, I think. I think Jeremy said, if June is the reallocation that comes before councils, uh, biennially, so. Um, that's something to keep on your radar there in that regard. Uh, number four, your governmental expenses, uh, I talked a little bit about the admin having a pretty big jump. Um, this is just an allocation, I think we just need to look at that a little bit. Uh, police, we are actually back below the per capita again, uh, last year was quite a bit higher due to the settlement payout. Um, but now, you know, since we're a little bit shorter on that, we're back below right in line with where, uh, other communities our size are operating. Um, in that regard. Uh, fires lower, parks lower, pools lower, uh, your library is a little bit higher, but. Realistically, it stayed pretty consistent, you know, if we look back to two thousand seventeen. Uh, it was seventy-three dollars per person, we're at seventy-five dollars per person, so we've. You know, maybe you're spending a little bit more per capita, but we're not spending, you know, a ton more. Uh, we haven't had a huge increase in cost through the years there, so. Um, overall, nothing really, two concerning there, those are just once again guidelines, um, you guys have to decide as council how you spend those dollars. Those just kinda show you where other communities are putting their dollars, where they're spending their dollars. Um, once again, not everyone's created equal, valuations are different everywhere across the board. Number eight, uh, outstanding geo debt, you guys are in actually really good shape there, you guys do not have a lot of. Uh, government obligation or gen- general obligation debt when we compare to everything. Um, unassigned fund balance, you can see, our recommendation would be about thirty percent positive or forty percent negative. Uh, we went back about two pers- percent this year. Um, goal would be to have roughly three to four months cash reserve on hand, which. If we get to the next page is roughly, uh, six hundred thousand dollars, and right now, at the bottom of page, there's a number twelve. We're at a deficit of about three hundred and eleven, so, uh, got a ways to go there, um. But from where we were in twenty-seventeen at minus eight twenty, um, we're making some dents in that. Uh, street fund cash reserve at the very top again, number seven. Uh, really good shape here, usually we see this ebb and flow, you guys have held pretty strong there. Likely there'll be some street projects, when those street projects come, we'll see the spend down in dollars there. Um, number nine, the capital assets, typically when we start getting below thirty-five percent. Of our original costs and assets, when we need to start worrying about replacement, we are getting to that stage in. The business type activities, um, and with that being said, you can see down below in the business type activities, cash recommendation. Our recommendation would be about one point six million dollars of cash, we guys have about six hundred and eleven, because our expectation is. There's about one point one million, uh, cash reserve needed for replacement of, you know, future infrastructure there in that regard, so. Once again, another thing to consider, uh, you know, once these infrastructure dollars finally get put out there. Maybe being able to tap into those, utilize low interest rates, uh, grant funded dollars. May make a lot of sense for the community, you know, even if it, you know, has a little bit of a rate impact, uh. You know, there's not too many people that wouldn't sign up for interest-free debt, you know, whether it was anywhere for that matter. Um, and then operating income, number ten, you can see everything's well above the fifteen percent. Um, electric funds a little bit of our allocation, uh, items coming into play. Sanitation, we have quite a big varying flow there going through the years, but water and sewer, we had some pretty significant rate increases, so. Um, we are seeing that, um, those, obviously, those rate increases are going to help us build up our cash reserves. That we're going to need probably for future replacement there in that regard. Um, and then debt coverage, uh, anything above one and a half is considered good. Uh, we have no debt in that electric fund, we're in great shape in the water, sewer, and sanitation as far as debt goes. So, you know, overall, I think, you know, we're continuing, we didn't. Stay treaded water, I guess, on our deficit general fund balance, it's just trying to continue to go forward, you know, look at. Ways that we can increase that valuation, you know. The sales tax situation that we have coming up here this year is going to be a huge. Impact and bearing on, you know, where we can go with that general fund deficit and kinda going forward to building up. Cash reserves to where we need to be, um, as a community. Questions?
I have a, just a quick one on the governmental expenses, number four.
Yeah.
You're saying that that administration was a little high, that it might be an allocation thing?
Yeah, it, we, we changed the allocation, under new administrators, we changed the way we allocated certain expenses such as Jeremy's salary. Getting allocated out potentially to electric, water, and sewer funds, it got allocated one hundred percent to the general fund.
Okay.
Um, which is increasing expenses in one fund, um, decreasing in the other fund, so it's just an allocation of. You know, like I kinda talked about, you know, if Brian pays my wage one hundred percent, but Pam and Bob see the benefits of that. He, it's gonna look like he's spending away more money, but I'm helping generate income or have everyone look at that.
Theoretically, like, just say that we, that you took his salary, just put it all in like the sewer fund or. That, that.
It would make, it would, it's not all seventy dollars of the difference, but, you know.
No, but I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, trying to understand what you were saying earlier about.
It would change this dynamic greatly.
Okay, so that would, that, that would essentially drop it though, and it would be.
It'd be back in line with where it was, um, you know, you can see the allocation there. Um, you know, since we've had the general fund deficit, uh, there's been a little bit more of an aggressive. Allocation, uh, in order to not show as many expenses in the general fund. Uh, where electric is now just a franchise fee effectively, there really isn't, uh. Anything to allocate there, uh, it's a collective payment on a.
Which just seems like that number might be. Subjective, cause you could always reallocate to different, different funds.
Correct, and it's just getting to a consistent allocation basis, exactly.
But you could technically change it from year to year, right?
Could, and it should be changed year to year based on cost rate studies, um, some of our communities do, you know, time studies. Every other year, every year, to see where they truly spend their hours so they allocate appropriately. Um, because, you know, if you're spending forty percent of your time working in the water department or working on water issues. Realistically, forty percent of your time should be allocated there, but if it's only ten percent waters, seeing that. Uh, inadvertent benefit of not having to pay the expense but giving your time.
Any other questions for Tom?
I guess you did a good job explaining all this.
Yeah, you did.
Don't relax, I mean, we're headed in the right direction, I told Jeremy, I'm always gonna ask this, because it felt like we've asked it in the past. We weren't heading in the right direction, but we are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're heading in the right direction, I think the biggest thing, we just have to continue. You know, the valuation we cannot control, um, the community I was at before this, you know. Their city attorney asked the question, you know, cause their valuation's below the peer group too. Um, and they're in the same one thousand to three thousand, he goes, but they have one of the higher valuations around, and I go, don't disagree. Your valuations in northeast Nebraska, for whatever reason, when we stack them up against the rest of the state, are drastically lower. Um, across the board, um, there's nothing we can do to control that, um. We've seen a, a much more aggressive approach, at least in central Nebraska, in regards to the housing market. It's kinda been a forgotten, you know, increase in our assess values. Uh, it seems like farmland's the biggest one that ebbs and flows year after year, because. Property taxes and school districts are in the foresight of everything, and so sometimes the housing. Commercial properties get, uh, left behind, uh, when it comes to down to it, and you know, personal example. You know, my personal house increased sixty thousand dollars in valuation this year. However, it's still assessed at less than what we purchased it four or five years ago. So, does that really, sometimes that's where our issue lies, is maybe not getting that valuation increase as quick as we can. Um, sometimes it's accessory related, sometimes it's, uh, not having all that data, you know. Uh, the attorney at the last one talked about a building that got built on a vacant lot, and it was off the property tax rules for two years. So, build a brand new building and it doesn't get put on the rolls because someone didn't cross-check building permits, so. Little things like that can add up, you know, it's not gonna make, it's not gonna find us, you know. Millions of dollars in valuations, but, you know, little bits of increase here and there, you know. Five percent, ten percent increases in the total valuation's going to help out, that's twenty-five thousand dollars in property tax year, so, I mean, that's. Part-time staff.
Well, thank you, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, number eight, public hearing, seven o'clock PM, application for class B liquor license, Family Dollar Incorporated. See anybody here from Family Dollar, is there anybody wishing to speak against said liquor license application? It's a public hearing.
Do you wanna start selling alcohol?
Yes.
Beer only? Okay.
It's just beer only, that's all they're gonna sell, for carry, for off sale, that's it.
Too bad they don't wanna sell fruits and veggies.
Seeing none, is there anybody wishing to speak in the neutral? Seeing none, is there anybody wishing to speak for said application? Seeing none, motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Okay, second? Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Number nine, discussion, action, approval of class B liquor license for Family Dollar Incorporated.
Uh, make a motion to approve the class B liquor license for Family Dollar?
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Nay.
Brian?
Nay.
Can you say that right, Bob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Hi.
I will vote aye, approval three to two. Number, or go back, sorry, the economic development season?
Hello, everybody.
Hi, good evening.
First, congrats on your audit.
Thank you.
Better than it has been in the past, and kudos to Jeremy and Courtney, I don't think they get enough credit for. What they do and trying to find all those numbers and. And make that, uh, change for all of us, so. All right, so the big issue for tonight is our housing project, that four-place project that we've been talking about for so long. Um, we are upside down, the final bid came in February eighteenth, it is three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars upside down. And it is all due to material costs, uh, coming from COVID and the supply chain issues. Um, electric's up ten percent, plumbing stuff went up twelve, lumber's increased each week of the last three weeks. Um, so, we've been scrambling, trying to figure out how are we gonna make it work. Um, the DED did release that competitive grant program that we can apply for additional funding. Um, they said it was based off twenty percent of the hard cost of the project. The actual hard development cost of the project is eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, DED is only allowing four hundred and seven of that to count. So the only, we can only ask for eighty-one thousand dollars, we're still short of a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are looking at different commercial loan products, long-term lending options. Um, inject, the investor has injected close to eighty-one thousand additional dollars into the project, we're still coming up short, so. The application for the funding is due March twenty-third, I did have a conversation with our DED rep and I said, look. We are willing to income qualify all the units, we're, he's absorbing a lot, all the land costs. We've done everything that we can possibly do to try to make this work, it's still coming up short, do we dare submit this? And she said to go ahead and submit it, that we're not alone, there are, the twenty percent gap that they're offering is not enough for everybody, and the reality is. All of our bids are based off February, but if they get back to us in April and award us eighty-one thousand, this project might be up another twenty based on. Costs, because costs keep rising, and we're not able to lock in any prices because nothing is for sure at the moment, so. We keep, continue to struggle, and, um, it becomes an issue where. When the grant was awarded and the project was originally bid. When the grant covers sixty percent of the project and the investor puts in the other forty, that's a gift. When the investor's now putting in, you know, seventy percent and the grant's covering less than thirty. That's not a gift anymore, that's not a gift to him, it's a gift to the city and they can't do that. Um, it has to cash flow, so, we're walking a fine line trying to make it work, I just want you to know that we're, we're literally doing everything we possibly can, if. For some reason, we have to turn this project back, turn it down, it's not for a lack of trying, and everybody's compromised on this, so.
Right, I was gonna say, I'd be okay with that, just for the fact, I mean, sometimes it's just better to not spend money when you can't spend money.
Yeah, it's, it's been a tough one, and it would be heartbreaking, you know, but, uh, we have tried for. The last eight months to make it go, and it's just been tough, so. Um, we'll know more after we submit on March twenty-third, hopefully, they said they don't have a date that they're gonna get back to us to let us know if we're awarded. So we are all hoping that that is not like DED likes to do three months down the road, because we're all in trouble and everyone wants to break ground in the spring, so. And we also have a contractor that is, you know, if we can't get him an answer, he's moving on to another project and we'll suffer more delays, so. It's, it's just a balancing act, um, we'll let you know what happens. Um, on the DTR, uh, we finally got our first reimbursement from the state. Um, and round two is still not open, so it's a, it's a delay for NINAD, we're having a lot of issues with the staff there. So we will get round two open as soon as we can, but it is, it's been a struggle, and Courtney knows my pain, so. Um, on the USDA Rural Innovation Challenge Grant. Um, on the USDA Rural Innovation Challenge Grant, um, Jeremy and the Planning Commission had a meeting with Lowell last night, Lowell did, uh, submit a draft of the comprehensive plan, so they were able to review it and kind of take a peek at it, and Lowell let them know that that's did he just say that's a guide, Jeremy, and that the strategic plan is coming now, next, and that'll be more in-depth?
No, so we'll have to have a public hearing next month for the plane zoning, and then a public here for the city council, and then approve that.
Okay.
And then, after all gets done, assuming the strategic plan is after that even, and that's supposedly a working document that's supposed to help guide the city.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's all gonna entail, but he says not gonna be near as much as comprehensive plan.
Okay, all right. And if you haven't taken a peek at the future land use maps, or looked at the progresses going, you can go to riserregion.com, you can click on Plainview, and all of our information is, is there. So, um, other than that, oh, we did get nominated for the Governor's Showcase Community Award, this is an award the governor, um, selects every year. Communities have to be nominated, and then there's, uh, application that we fill out, so the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Economic Development Department nominated Plainview for all of the success that we've had in the last three to four years with grants and businesses and, uh, place making projects. Um, the groups that have been formed and all the collaboration that's happening, so that'll be kind of nice, that application is due, uh, this Friday, so. Um, if we win that, that'll be a big deal, and the governor will come, and hopefully you can all be there, so.
Gonna build the fourplexes when he gets done, or?
We beg him for some more money, so, it's just not working, um, but yeah, I mean, any questions?
The building I asked Jeremy about that Norfolk got last month, is that the one that we were in the running for, or is that a different one?
Different, Norfolk wasn't eligible for that funding, uh, Norfolk and the bigger communities, so we're still in the running as far as we know, we just, we haven't heard anything. Um, none of the other communities have either, and one of my board members on TCD is actually on the board for that project, and he hasn't heard anything either, so. I think we're just in a waiting game, so.
Any other questions for Susan? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We don't speak yet, so we'll go down, number ten, discussion, action, opening a bids for rent of hay and legume. Jimmy didn't bring that fancy.
I thought you were prepared to date, Brian.
I don't have one. Okay, I Tim Johnston will give a bid of five hundred and ninety-five dollars cash rent of hay ground, and it has a legal description, has its information. I Trent Tarson made a bid for hanging the legume ground eighty dollars per acre, total cost of seven hundred and twenty dollars, so you have seven hundred and twenty dollars or five hundred and ninety-five dollars. What was the council wish to do?
Motion to approve the seven hundred and twenty dollar.
Okay, second, any discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, congrats Trent, thank you for the bid. Number eleven, discussion, action, resolution number six four nine, purchase of semi and backhoe for transfer station.
Okay, well, what we've got is just a generic authorization to borrow. The, uh, you've already made your decisions to go ahead, so this just gives the bank something to put in their file, to scare their bank examiner. They freely administer the debt. If you've already made the other decisions, it's my understanding, what we have here is the terms, hundred and forty thousand, twenty quarterly payments, two point five percent. So, they just need that to verify you agree that's a city debt, and they can go forward.
Make a resolution, pass six four nine?
Second. Second?
Second.
All right, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. All right, number twelve, discussion, action, league model ordinances, ordinances number nine seven six. We went over them last month.
Yeah, I've got the package for you here again, while you're passing these around, the other question at the moment is, you wanna touch on your number six? Nuisance ordinances?
Was Luke gonna be here in person, or?
Well, I have a report on that question for you. Do you wanna jump back to number six?
Yeah, I mean, that was my understanding, he was gonna be here in person, but I.
Well, that was his intention, he called me middle of the morning, and said he was running late, he was running the hearings all over the region. He didn't think he was gonna make it, and he wondered what I thought about simplifying the process for nuisances, and just having the Board of Health decide to go after somebody, and write him a nasty letter, and then prosecute him. As opposed to go through the Board of Health cleanup process. Well, that's the same two alternatives I've been telling you about for five years. The last two or three that we've done, we actually have done the, write the nasty letter, time limits up, prosecute, fine him, move on. And he made the point to me, that's what he wanted to do, and I said, well, sure, do that. So, with that, he said, I probably won't break my neck to make it to the meeting, that was all he wanted to run by you. But that already exists in our code as an alternative, you either prosecute for a nuisance violation as a criminal matter, and try and add in an order of abatement along the way, to say you, we can clean it up too if you don't do it, but incidentally, we're gonna find you. Or you go the long route with the Board of Health and the hearings and the whole nine yards, and you kind of decided a year ago, you don't wanna do that anymore. You would rather have him just go forward with the prosecutions. Why? Part of the problem, I think, and I, maybe I should have tried to come to this meeting he had with you, he mentioned to me, I said, that's pretty clear, it's all in the city code, and he said, I don't have a copy of the city code. Well, if you're gonna prosecute the municipal ordinances, probably you should have a copy, so you know what the law is. That's an unfortunate step that hasn't happened yet, do you have an extra code book you can give him?
No, but it's all online.
Yeah.
I told him that, he didn't know that either. Uh, that's probably the simplest route.
I can order him one, that's, that's his own copy.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, there's one on file with the county court. And there has to be to prosecute these things, and he can certainly look at that one, and when he's coming through Pierce. But online is the easy answer, and then he just needs to go forward. And I, I was a little surprised when he told me he had yet to read the ordinances, if he's talking about enforcing them, but that needs to happen. You know, I, years ago, Judge Warren said to a young lawyer, not me, from the bench, well, perhaps you should consult the red book of surprises. Nebraska statutes are basically red books. And, uh, Judge Warren, I thought, if you're gonna enforce the law, you should read the statutes, and I think that's a good plan. But I told Luke that, and he's willing to do that, he may be calling about where is it online, and what do I gotta do? But he's, he's ready to go, and I told him, it's there, just go. So, did you pick out some particular items for him to go on?
Well, we, we talked at the meeting that, to simplify the process, the health board would do the research, and check out the properties. Move them forward to the council, the council would declare them a nuisance property, and then Luke would, Luke would send out the letter.
Well, that's.
Leave Courtney completely out of it, which I think is wonderful.
Yeah, send them out a warning letter or something.
And it would go, once the council declares it nuisance property, it goes straight to him, and he sends the letter out. Because it would mean more coming from a lawyer than.
That's fine. Yeah, ignore the Board of Health procedure business, we, but we've talked about that before.
Yeah. Is it already in our books like that?
It's there, and it's available, the alternatives are
Okay, all right, that's good then.
on hand.
Good deal.
So, if you just tell him, go on a certain property, and what terms you would like to offer them. You know, we wanna give him thirty days to clean it up, or we're gonna file, or whatever.
Okay.
And then he can just do it, you know, with a letter from him.
Yeah.
And then file, I mean, that's what we did with Spalding and Frederick
Yeah.
in the last six months.
Yeah.
And Spalding came around and got his done, and Frederick, there's a fine on the books order right now. You know, hers is an ongoing issue, and how to clean that up is kind of an ongoing issue, but you'll have to talk about that. It's still not entirely cleaned up.
So, would the time, timeframe decide, be decided by the health board and forward to the council?
Well, hers is, you know, from my standpoint, hers is done, and she has been fined five hundred dollars. But we didn't try to put an order of abatement in there, I guess you'll have to decide what you wanna do. That's a particularly hard case, for what are you gonna do, send people with pickaxes and take their porch apart and throw away all the stuff, you know, I, I don't know what you're gonna do. It's a hard case, but the fine will eventually start to get some attention too, if you keep doing that. So, I think you, you're set to go with him.
So, she has a fine, she pays it, and then we go through the process again until she cleans it up, or she just keeps getting fined until?
Well, the maximum that the city can do for a fine is five hundred dollars.
Per time.
But that can be filed multiple times on a per day basis. I mean, if you choose to really turn up the heat, it could get to be quite unpleasant, something would have to happen. You know, whether you do the order of abatement in that case, and try to go after it, and send people with boxes and tobacco is another matter. If you want me to, you know, nudge this, or point out certain code sections for him, but it's right there, you can do that. So, that was the end of that, so back to your big lead pack, lead package. I squeezed out the set of content, and it's on the list here, one through sixteen, there may be extras, just make sure. Luke, you need one, did I have enough that they came around and there were extras on the back end?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Throw one down the table, so we don't have to have him asking in two minutes. Kind of that one. So, I created this list from what you told me the other day, or last month, most of it's amendments, if we have existing code sections. We, if you get down to number twelve, you will see, I tampered with that a little bit, we were adding in those property tax things as eight twenty-four, eight twenty-five, eight twenty-six, and I initially said eight twenty-seven, just because that was the sequence. But I proofread the, the final copy against the code book just late this morning, and eight twenty-seven is the LB eight forty ordinance. And if we repeal the LB eight forty ordinance, that would probably upset the board and cause all kinds of difficulty. So, we're not gonna amend eight twenty-seven, and I invented eight twenty-six point five, that'll stick in between and fill that gap. And number thirteen, code section one oh nine, that had to be new, there was no, so that says, there was no, want, nothing to amend, so that says create. The rest of them, you'll see, generally talk about amendments, but the content that you see there, those sixteen items, are all the things you talked about last, last month. And this is all you then pass and publish, and the, the American legal publishing people can pick up from there and redo the code book. Well, there you go, unless you have questions.
All right, uh, motion to pass league model ordinances, number nine seven six.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero on first reading?
I'll make a motion to forego the second, third reads, on ordinances nine seven six.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third reads. Number thirteen, discussion, action, special designated liquor license request, first one is for Plainview Fire and Rescue. Horseshoe Tournament, June first, twenty twenty-two, from four PM to midnight, Mr. Tar. Any questions for him?
Are we approving the exemption waiver for the double fencing rule, or has that already been approved through the state?
No, he has to submit that to the state.
I, I talked with Court to you incidentally earlier on this, this whole list, on the question of diagrams and measurements and footages and exactly, and the consensus is, the state doesn't care that much, if the city's willing to pass it, you're probably good enough with the applications as they stand, some of them are a little more formally done than others. You got better measurements and a better diagram, but they'll probably all serve.
Motion for each one?
Yes, please.
Okay, make a motion to pass the special designated liquor license, license for the Plainview Fire and Rescue Horseshoe Tournament, June first, from four PM to twelve AM.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Nay.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Next one is Plainview Chamber of Commerce Cornhole Tournament, June third, from five PM to two AM.
Hey, we are here from the chamber. Actually, Karine's here from the chamber.
Yeah, Karine's here from the chamber.
She brings nothing about this, so.
Um, so, we are planning on having a cornhole tournament down at the band shell with DJ as well. Um, we plan on fencing in the entire band shell area and the, uh, sand volleyball courts, because that's the, the next morning. So, we fenced off last year, it went real well, um, didn't have any issues.
You got actual sanctions for cornhole people coming, or just, uh?
Sure, we had some, we had some legit growers.
Oh, I know, it's a terrible big thing.
Yeah, we had, uh, more than what the bracket allowed, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special designated liquor license for the Plainview Chamber of Commerce Cornhole Tournament, June third, five PM to two AM.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Next one is for Plainview Chamber of Commerce Sand Volleyball Tournament, June fourth, eight AM to five PM. Got a six hour break in between there.
Yep. We're gonna get some quality sleep there.
I guess so.
So. Uh, we, we ran a sand tournament last year, it went well, um, no problems, so.
Make a motion to pass special designated liquor license for the Plainview Chamber of Commerce Sand Volleyball Tournament, June fourth, eight AM to five PM.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, next one is for Keystone, for the Chamber Street Dance, June fourth, from eight PM to two AM.
We can do the next two together.
Next two together.
Yeah.
And also for thirteen twenty. And that is on locus between Maine and Maple, it looks like.
They're from like Madison County, paint to Pinnacle.
Okay.
Running that area.
They're both through the exact same area, um, at the same time, so.
Sounds great, perfect.
Simplifies it.
I make a motion to approve the special designated liquor license for Keystone and thirteen twenty Chamber Street Dance, June fourth, from eight PM to two AM.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, next one is for thirteen twenty, for the Beer Garden, June eleventh, twenty twenty-two, six AM to nine AM, that was for breakfast, right?
I guess.
During the, or before the partial, during the partial, yeah.
Is that going through the F P A gender show or?
As far as I know, uh, no.
No, I do.
Uh, basically I decided that I didn't wanna mess with car show, so I'm just doing Bloody Marys and breakfast. And as long as Sherry's permit goes through for nine A M., I'll stop at nine A M. and she'll take over her area and the whole area on Main Street. Just so we didn't have to, uh, walk off and do much fencing and then mess with the car show.
Motion to approve the special, special designated liquor license for thirteen twenty, June eleventh, six A M. to nine A M.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero and the last one is for Keystone, for the Car Show, June eleventh, from nine A M. to five P M.
That one pretty much runs the same as it has, past few years where the cars are. They'll be monitoring the whole time.
We're gonna make the motion to pass the special designated liquor license for Keystone, at the Car Show, June eleventh, from nine A M. to five P M.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Number fourteen, discussion action, approval of fireworks for clown days, June fourth, twenty twenty-two.
South side of your timeframe for legal fireworks in the state of Nebraska, so you just need permission to do it.
Same location, behind the ball fields. Um, rain date will be whenever the manor holds their Fourth of July, if they do it this year. I think it's like the Wednesday, the, the Fourth of July, so.
Make a motion to approve the fireworks for clown doll days, June fourth.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Next one, number fifteen, discussion action, request from Plainview Public Schools for street closures on Lincoln Avenue. This would be between the ball fields and other that say legal street.
So, yeah, I'm, I just text Kyle, he thought it was after his school board meeting, but it's not. Um, so he won't be able to make it. Uh, they would like to close for March twenty-second, April first and April seventh. And then he said he would come to the next council meeting if he had any more dates.
What were the three dates again?
March twenty-second, April first, and April seventh.
Those are track meets, you know? I know April first is the big one, big track meet.
And then he said, he will be here for the next council meeting. Um.
Times?
Times, that's so perfect. And like I said, this is because obviously it's now a legal street, um, so even for football games, we'll have to do this. Hopefully we can probably make some type of, I would think, resolution or ordinance in the future, Bruce. Something like where they put barricades across, kinda like what they do in the middle of the street maybe. And, or the council can approve every, every calendar date, makes no difference, so.
Yeah, I don't know that you can designate the authority to the school indefinitely, but we can certainly come up with some kinda generic.
We do, we do now.
Language that'll make it work for them.
I just wonder like during the school days, how they block out between the high school and elementary?
Yeah. Um, yeah, and like I said, he, he can come every season too, I don't think he really cares either way. So April one would be all day. And I'm assuming these are all track events. Okay, March twenty-second. Two thirty till when? Till seven. April first is all day. And April seventh is two thirty-seven. Okay, it's probably gonna get denied, but I'll try my best.
Jeremy, all day on the first meeting, starting from what time all day, so?
Uh, s- so all day, April first is like seven A M. Eight thirty till seven? Okay, eight thirty-seven, six? Okay. Alright. Alright, sounds good, talk to you later. Did anybody hear that?
I did.
Alright.
He said thank you.
Yes. So those are the three dates and he said he will be here April council meeting.
I make, uh, motion to approve the street closing for Lincoln Avenue on the dates that were provided, March twenty-second, two thirty to seven, April first, all day, meaning eight thirty to seven P M. April seventh, two thirty to seven P M.
Second? Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Number sixteen, discussion action, request for street closure on Locust Avenue, seven A M. to five P M. on March twenty-sixth for, an auction for Bob and Carolyn Smith. You're gonna retire, retire, huh?
Partial. I live that long.
Do a lot of work.
And I, this is for, I, I'm assuming Main to Maple then, that one block?
Yeah, one block.
Make a motion to approve the street closure, Locust Avenue, from seven A M. to five, to five P M., March twenty-sixth.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
We'll have to have state verse.
I don't think you have to, it's not a direct financial benefit, but it might be.
Motion passes four to zero.
It's too late in the game for that.
The next one's all Bob, as our representative, discussion action on ACE member distribution funds twenty twenty-one in the amount of four thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Nice big check, man.
So this fund obviously comes for part of the volume that is utilized in town and then like the ACE coffee shop talk that I did last year, it's a thousand dollars there. And then we get, um, three hundred dollars for every meeting that we attend for Quorum. And so that all goes into that. Uh, we usually pick a spot for it to go, um, the biggest thing that we're looking for this year is actually our handy van. Our handy van needs to be updated, it is over ten years old, uh, meets all qualifications for a new one. We have to pay at least ten percent of a new one and so that would, uh, help go towards a new handy van, if you guys still chose. So we haven't started applying for it yet, but we, we will. And we have a handy van meeting tomorrow at five, if anybody feels like they wanna, here it goes on.
Number eighteen, discussion action, change date of council meeting, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, due to primary election.
Uh, so obviously the library will be full that day from eight A M. to eight P M., so we won't be able to be in here at all. Unless you wanna go to a meeting at eight thirty that night, but I really don't want to, so, um, I guess my, we looked at the calendar, we could either move. I didn't know when bowling was done. Are you done by the end of April? So could we go on Wednesday or would you guys rather do it Thursday that week? I'm kinda leaving it up to you guys, so.
Can we do on Monday or is that, uh?
Are you taking like, you're talking like May eleventh or twelve? Mm-hmm. Okay, either of those would be fine? I'm not gonna bump it ahead, cause that would be school board.
Yes.
That'd be school board.
That'd be school board.
Probably not gonna do that.
Just wanna get that to you guys.
Yep, doesn't matter.
We can talk about it later on too.
I just wanna get out there early, so if you guys had some, if you're okay with moving, we can.
Twelve.
Okay.
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday.
Whatever the working people need to do. Thursday would be better than Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go Thursday, meet twelve, same at six thirty.
We need to vote on that in motion now? Bob?
I know I'm working.
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero and then, it's not on the.
Just for your, you'll have to do this again in November because your regular meeting will again fall on general election, so we'll talk about that probably in September.
And it's not on here, but did you all, um, see about next Thursday, possibly the seventeenth for the special meeting, does that work for everybody?
Yeah, we already have it.
Yep, it's in, everybody's gonna be seventeenth, uh, there'll be essentially four agenda items on there. There will be the awarding or denying of paving bids, there will be, um, for extra funding, as Susan said, the eighty-one thousand, has to be a public hearing, so we can go and apply for more. Um, the P B C F will be asking if we can be on account for the event center. And the third one is, or fourth one is Bud's contract, so obviously our garbage hauler has, cannot survive with four dollars and fifty cent diesel fuel and rising. And so they asked us to increase our contract, which is in our contract, that they can do so with the price of fuel, so we will be discussing that as well.
Is that six or six to?
Six.
Six, okay.
Is it too late to add one more thing?
Uh, you can call, call them at the office tomorrow.
It depends on how nice you are.
It's, um, just maybe something to consider and I don't even know if you want, it may be on the next council meeting, but we got a email today from North Fork Transportation. Uh, I don't know if you remember Josh Schmitz, he used to run the hardware store here, he is now their operations manager. And they're seeking donations to help fund their operation. And they do come to Plainview and, um, they're asking money from like Pierce County, but they're also asking for individual cities. Uh, no set dollar bound, just whatever you wanna contribute, but if you hit a certain benchmark, um, the rides are like, I think, five or ten dollars, or if they would be free to people from here to North Fork, North Fork, so I think they take them, it's like a tax, I mean like a taxi service will take you to your doctor's appointments or whatever you've got going on. And he did say there are some people from the Plainview area that did it, so I told him that he can submit a formal email request to the city, but that would maybe be something he would, I don't even wanna consider it or not.
This is a for-profit business?
It's North, North Fork Transportation?
Yeah.
As compared to the punk, people that do this also?
We can put it on, we can put on April one.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, he just reached out to me, cause you know, he knew me, but I was like, I will tell you that you know the city and I'll put a bug in their ear, but I can't make any promises, so.
We should send a donation request back.
Well, if it's a privately owned for-profit business, giving them money is a problem.
I think the city funds it, North Fork funds it somehow.
It used to be North Fork, now it's expanding, yeah.
I think we already have our handy vans in Washington, conflict of our current transportation services.
Yeah, we have to look at what our transportation contract is, cause we have an entire thing, I have to sit through the state, what are, what we do and if we are supplementing that with another service, we'll probably lose our federal funding, is my guess, so. Cause our, our handy van service supplies rides to North Fork, in case you don't know that.
No, I know that.
I just don't wanna compromise our federal funding if we're supplementing rides with a different service, so that would probably be a problem. So I'll have to look into that.
Yep, so look for his email.
Number nineteen, council comments, Bob?
Yeah, I would just like to say, after going through the budget, to thank Jeremy Courtney for all the work they've done, he did turn around.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Pam? Tyler? Brian?
Good.
Motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Second? Only favor I?
Aye.
Both same side? Next Thursday, six P M.